Welcome to the special board meeting of the Board of Directors of the Vallesito's Water District. They're coming at six on Thursday, September 22.
Even Michael's not here. Check the hospitals.
Director Hernandez, will you lead us in place, please?
I'll be happy to. Ready, begin.
I declare to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Hernandez.
President Sinaloa, thank you for asking me.
Is this an honor? Do we have a roll call? Anne, please.
I believe I'm here.
Present.
Here.
We'll say it loud enough so the audience can hear.
Yeah, so before we entertain a motion on the agenda to adopt it, I need to read. An item has arisen subsequent to the posting of an agenda, to the posting of the agenda which the board needs to take action on pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B2. Agenda item 1.4 from last night's meeting concerned board approval of the splash newsletter. There is a change to the newsletter that the board needs to approve, and because there's time-sensitive information in the newsletter, it is current, it is urgent that the board take action this evening. But I have a motion and a second, and it will require a four-fifth vote.
So what?
To the agenda.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's four-fifths, right?
Five-fifths.
Five-fifths.
Yes, that's five-fifths.
And then do we need to adopt the regular agenda, too? Or does that cover it off?
I think it covers it off.
Okay, there's no public comment, so we'll skip that. And can I get a motion to go into closed session? Or should we talk about 1.4 first?
This is open session.
Turn it over to you.
Mr. Press. Good afternoon, President Sinaloa board members. So I got the information about wanting to recap from last night's board meeting and the action that the board took. So you got sent out by Diane earlier today a draft of a change to the splash. I appreciate the special session so that I can get splash out and we can get people signed up for the Water Academy, which is also included. So the article that was removed was the article on special districts that CSDA had desired.
You've got the, I'm sorry to interrupt, Sinaloa's confused. You have the original splash and then what we're going to put in its place. So.
Does everybody have copies of them?
Yeah, I also handed out the original splash, so that second page goes away and gets replaced with the, with the one that you had out.
The complete second, say that again, please.
Yeah, you, we handed out the original, the one you had in your packet from last time, and then we also have this one pager, that's the one that we're intending on replacing.
Basically like that.
Yeah.
Yes. So you take out the complete second page and put in the, the one that we're looking at.
Correct.
Thank you.
And so this write-up introduces in the first paragraph the board's vote, the half of the wholesale rate increases, the information about a public hearing, the need for rate increases, the fact that we have these wholesale water rate increases, the cost reduction efforts that the board and the district has taken over the last few years, and then kind of a bottom-line quote. And I sent President Sinaloa late in the day a draft of a press release as well with a similar quote in it, and I'd like to give them the chance to review and edit that and let me know what we can get out so that the public can know, not only in splash but also as part of a press release, to put it out so people understand what's going on. And then as kind of a tack-on follow-up, we did get all those Prop 218 letters, and we've sent responses to them, but there were some additional ones that came in. I think we even got some today. And then we want to follow up with them and tell people that we wrote to what exactly the result was, and use this text to craft up those responses to the citizens.
Chris, I'm sorry, I haven't been at my computer all day. We were going to, I think, direct the staff, hopefully, to send us those responses to each individual so we can check ourselves. And did we get those all sent out to us today? I just haven't been there.
Yeah, I sent that to Diane a little bit earlier today, kind of compiled. It's a pretty extensive list, probably about 136 pages of letters from the citizens and then responses from the district. It's a big file, I think six megabytes.
We already have the letters from the citizens because Diane is giving those to us.
Okay.
We sorted them in our responses. Because it was a lady here last night that said she didn't give a response.
I believe it was Mrs. Patterson, maybe?
I think that was her.
And I have copies of the response that was sent to her, so I don't know what to, I don't know what to say except for it was issued. The, if it's easier to just give you.
Did you send out all those responses?
Rosie's actually been handling most of it for us. Rosie, who was our.
Rosie's former customer service supervisor.
She comes in part-time.
I just wonder where it was given to.
So if it shrinks it to just send out the letters versus give you the customer's letter and then in turn our response to it, that'll reduce the size of the PDF, obviously.
But was there a standard response that we sent to everybody?
There essentially was a standard response, but sometime, you know, and I think you all saw, some of the customers just said, "I protest," and that's the end of their statement. And some other ones were very involved and brought up drought or brought up other topics, and if it was warranted to delve into their complaint or their question, we modified it and added additional text to it to respond to their concern.
Okay. I think early on in this, in that response process, I think I saw like a spreadsheet or something that was being maintained of who, is that something that you could sort the, the people who wrote letters by which district they're in, then provide that to the board members, and so that way if they wanted to reach out to individuals that are in their district and, you know, by the board member?
We can absolutely do that. It's not set up by district, but we can figure that out.
Should be pretty easy.
Yeah.
It would be helpful.
Yeah.
True. That way we can reach out to them and do any kind of follow-up if they have any questions or anything like that.
Sure.
I actually got a bunch of text messages from people that were here last night already today, so I think they appreciate being able to kind of follow up. Some of them had to leave early because they were, I think they're kind of a senior crowd, you know, and they just couldn't stay up that late, but they didn't know what the results were, so they were texting me and asking me, so. Okay, that'd be helpful, and.
I would.
Oh, I don't know if we want to move on to this right here, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I.
Chris, thank you for your job here, but no offense to you, you did a wonderful job. You're the PR person. We're not trying to PR him to death, we're trying to tell him exactly what happened.
Sure.
And I like your first and second paragraph very much with slight changes to it, and I would actually think that I like the top, by CSDA board directors votes to limit water rate increases. I like to have somewhere in there by a split decision or a split vote. I want people to know it's not unanimous. We don't have to say who did what, but that wouldn't be appropriate, I don't think, but showing there was a split decision, three-two. And as far as moving on, the need for rate increases, the wholesale water, and all the justifications, we don't really need. I mean, that's, we've already done that in all the newsletters, all the splashes we send down. Maybe just make it larger print, because people will start reading this and then will fall asleep, or they'll just bypass and look at the next picture, but it's not going to all get read, and so what's the point of putting it all on there? I just want to see the larger print so people know, hey, this is a notice. We did increase your rates. We did increase 5% water-only, not the 15%, the 218, that's not showing here either. The 218 notice showed 15% increase. We didn't increase them that much. I think those are important facts to get out there, exactly what happened, and I don't think we need to put the fluff. The fluff to me is like, you know what, people want to read, give me the facts, just the facts. Just the facts, man, just the facts. So that's my opinion.
Any other feedback?
I'd like to have a second to read it.
I read it. I agree with Hal strongly that it needs to reflect that it was some sort of split decision, however you could say, voted three to two, or something to that extent, right up front. And, you know, it's interesting because the title says, Vallesito's Board of Directors votes to limit water rate increases, but doesn't really go into how I was saying that what, I'm assuming that what you meant by that was the 218 said 15% increase over three or 2.2 months or whatever it was, but the board ended up passing just 5%. Is that what you meant by limit? Okay. So, but maybe we need to articulate that in, in there that that's what, you know, we limited it, or the three that passed it limited it to 5%. And then, the other, I mean, as far as the quote, I didn't get this until like right before I started writing here, so I couldn't respond. I always appreciate, Chris, you come up with some great quotes for me, and I thank you. This one I'm a little bit uncomfortable with because I spent three hours last night basically saying that we haven't cut enough, and then I don't want it to be quoted that we've made significant strides in cutting operating costs after, after talking about the three hours that we're saying that we had, and so I'll come up, out of this whole process, if we, if I can have until like maybe 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, I don't know what, how fast we need to turn this around, but I'll come up with a quote tonight after the first thing tomorrow morning, and I'll email it to you.
That's good.
That's really my feedback. But I do appreciate you, I mean, I know it was, you know, we didn't get it until nine o'clock or something, and that direction probably didn't get to you until this morning, so thank you so much for getting on it right away. Any other feedback?
I concur with all the comments so far, and particularly on further articulating the title, limiting the water rate increases. If you could just explain.
What we can do is probably in the public hearing section, put what it was originally in the notice, so it's probably a good, good place to put it, and just say that, you know, voted three-two, vote to pass through the wholesale only, and explain in the public hearing section what the original was.
True. Okay. To Hal's point, too, I, I think if you can shrink it down to maybe like, if you could fit it like in half the page, and then maybe come up with some, either come up with some images or something over here, or another story, if they have a smaller story, but I think if you can give people, you know, you lose their attention after a while, I'm sure you know that from your background, but, so if there's stuff in there that, you know, that you think's less important than other things, then try to get it down to like a half a pager.
Well, to go back, I'm sorry, the need for rate increases, that's, that's not the message we're trying to pass. We're not trying to sell them on. We're trying to tell them what we did.
Already done, yeah, that's done.
We had an action item, we want to tell them what we did, not all the fluffy feel-good, you know, stuff.
Richard Evans, do you have some comments?
Yes, I have no problem with reducing it for the splash, although I'm not convinced there's no reason you couldn't put this on the site as well for those who would like to read more. I think it's kind of foolish to assume nobody will read it, as it is foolish to assume everyone would read it, but I do think the right, they haven't, it won't hurt for them to hear one more reason why there was a need in the first place that we were all looking at, and why there's wholesale rate increases. I think the cost reductions are worthy of commenting on, and I think in the public hearing, it would probably be appropriate at that part to say there was bail to all accountants, and then say what it, I mean, accounts, holders, what, just kind of reiterate what it said, that we were anticipating a 5% increase this year and each of the next two, according to the thing. And then I think you could skip the other three, not in a splash maybe, but I still feel that's valid in a, up on the website for someone to read it again, because regardless of, if it was three-two or four-one or five-o, we did have a little rate increase, and we should reiterate why we did. And then I just, my only comment on the bottom line is, and I understand why President Sinaloa wants to use his own words, however, you did make some valid points last night that you wanted to do more cost cuts. At the same time, I don't think that it would be dishonest to say we've made significant strides in cutting operating costs on behalf of its ratepayers, because we have done that. Whether there's a lot more to do or not, the fact that we have gone, got the D-cell, and we have done a Levenham, those are truths, and the whole board is involved in those. So I just hope we've, and I guess it's more to you, Mike, I just hope when you make your statement that you, you know, honor the fact that there have been significant strides in the four years, and you're, you know, you're welcome to say there's many more that you'd like to see done or something, but I just don't want this to be about, this is about the board decision, it's about the board. So whether we all agree with it or not, the board has made strides, and the board did a raise. That's all. I just, that's, I don't. But I do hate to see us lose the reasoning, because I think we need to reiterate to people the need and what we did and what we've done. Good job, guys.
So what's the direction here? We're going to have another shot at this, is that what we're going to do?
And then, yeah, email it back, and.
And.
We need to get on to 27.
Are we?
Yeah, I was going to say.
I would have absolutely no reason that I would want this to go out without us.
We can bring it back on a 27.
Oh, okay.
As long as we give Chris some, some pretty solid direction.
I just wanted to, I would like to get this out as soon as possible, but we all need to see it and agree on it, and if that's the 28.
27.
The 27?
Keep saying the 28. 27, we can again fit this into the agenda so we don't have to step on our toes.
Yeah, and I think we'd like to get this so we can accommodate the Water Academy, but I think this is far more important than a Water Academy. Forty people driving around on a bus versus our 21,000 constituents getting something in the mail. I think it's hugely important, and needs to be done right. Now, we've had, in the information you've been given, different thoughts, so so far I haven't seen you get any clear direction from this board. I've stated mine, other people have stated theirs, but it's not clear direction. So what do you need? And what can we do as far as giving clear direction as to what we want?
Do you want any, start with this way, I guess, do you want any sections completely eliminated as a consensus?
Yes, I do.
Which ones?
Three, four, five, and a huge modification of six.
And is there a consensus for that, or?
I'm okay with that. I mean, it's.
If we're talking, if it's about what you're going to put in the splash?
Yes, this is for the splash.
Just for the splash. It's all right. With me, if we do one, two, and six, I do have some feelings about that, but I've already expressed them, and I trust that Mike will do what he feels appropriate. As specific directions go, I think it was pretty clear that what you asked for, and so far nobody's disagreed with you, Hal, is you wanted to state that there was a three-two split, and to state what the rate was to be, as, and I think Tom and Chris have both said they've heard that. Is there something else they missed? I mean, it's beautifully said and very simply said, and if it, you know, I have no problem if we kept those other three, but if that's not the consensus, I don't think we'll lose it.
No, I believe that's exactly what I said, but I don't want it, a term I heard used about, we anticipated a 5%, 5%, 5%, the 218 didn't anticipate, the 218 said, there's going to be 5%, 5%, 5% if the thing passes. So it wasn't, I don't, just don't want it softened up.
Well, I'm going to argue that.
It is what it is.
It, when you put out the 218, you are telling people, this is what we anticipate to do. We're not saying we're doing it if we pass it. The whole purpose of the public hearing is for them to get up and speak and to change our minds. So to say we are proposing, we proposed, that's all we did, we proposed it.
I did not propose that.
Well, you know what? All you didn't propose was the third year. And, Hal, you agreed to that when we agreed to the piece of paper we all agreed to, which you didn't, we didn't catch it. We didn't catch it.
You're right, we didn't.
That was not staff's fault, that was our fault.
That was a, that was an effort on staff to misdirect?
No.
That I think there was a.
That's just suspicion on your part.
No, it's fact. You can look at it and see it.
I can look at it and see, I can look at it and say, if it was, then that just shows how dumb we are. If we're constantly on staff and yet we don't bother to check and get on it, then it's our fault. So if that was a big deal, I think you had a responsibility to have said something, and you didn't. You missed it. When you missed it, it got passed. That's what happened. So this is not about degrading, belittling, or pointing fingers on anyone. What we have in front of us is what we passed was what was on that Prop 218, and five votes approved it. Whether we liked it or not, that's what was done. So we don't have the right now to change the wording. We proposed 5% for three years. That's the truth. That's the fact.
Yeah, I have issues with that, too.
I knew you had this.
Go ahead.
This is going to continue, this is not, this is not stopping here, but seeing as you want to bring it up here, I didn't think it was actually part of this conversation. But there was a concerted effort to misdirect us. We were expecting to come back with some changes that were made. None of us on this board had ever talked about 5%, 5%, 5%, and you can check the DVD. That was never even talked about at the first meeting. Never even talked about. That was something that staff decided to do, that had nothing, was never a conversation with us whatsoever. Staff decided to do it. Now, did we miss that? Yes. Did I miss that? Yes, I did.
I did.
I was misdirected, or you can call it whatever you want to call it, there's many different names for it, but we came in, I wasn't even looking for that, I was looking for the letters being read and a few other nuances. I assumed and trusted that staff wouldn't just make up this 5%, 5%, 5% out of thin air. We never discussed that.
I'm surprised you trusted them, Hal, and you don't trust them on anything.
Well, and here's the reason.
So, and that, and you've, you've talked about that many times. So if you suddenly decided to trust them, I would be more inclined to believe you came in, you didn't read it thoroughly, and you were looking for what you wanted changed. Staff, maybe staff did or didn't put something in there, but I don't think it was done to trick us. They put it in there, they gave you the copy in front of you, they didn't have it in tiny letters hidden on the side. So your accusations, and I begin to feel if this is what this is about, I think this is inappropriate to do that in public. If you want to talk to staff, you take them aside.
You recognize it?
No, no, I have no power as one person to, the entire board, you don't take them aside when you think there's a problem. You have to bring it up to the entire board when you think there's a problem. That's the correct way to handle it, not a sidebar.
You're bringing it up to the whole board, you don't attack them in public.
Now, I have the foreword, and I stopped and listened to your diatribe.
I didn't have a diatribe.
You get to listen to mine.
Okay, calm, your voice down there.
Staff came back with that, and I did trust them, I didn't look at it, but if you remember, I only got that when I got sitting here on the dais. It wasn't three days like we've talked about, it was like, here it is, and we were conducting other business that I thought more important about a general manager than this. That's really what we were talking about.
Just to, just to, if I may clarify, it was in the board packet that went out ahead of time. What about the board packet? The full notice.
You know, I brought up the 218, and everybody looked at me and said, you didn't get one at home? I go, well, no, I don't pay for the water directly, I pay through intermediary. That was the conversation. So I didn't get one at home like other people did, and I didn't get it in my packet. The second time I did.
Missed the July 26th.
And I did miss that, I agree, but I called you, Tom, within three or four days to say, I just read this thing and I saw that we have, and you started justifying away where these numbers came from, and we've never talked about five, five, and five, ever. So when it appeared on that, I don't know where it came, it had to come from staff because we never, we never talked about it as a board at a public meeting at all. So it came from a meeting somewhere that we weren't involved in.
If, is it okay? Originally, one of the, I can't remember the date, but we were looking at an 8.1 and a 4.7, you know, it dropped like four, and we were directed, make whatever cuts you need to, to get this down to 5%. And, you know, in that context, we got it down to 5%?
But was, it was always, Tom, 5% for two years. I mean, we probably, we talked, we hashed that out at nauseam, I mean, it's probably said on, on the tape 20 different times by the, by the five of us. How did, how did we go from two years at 5% to 22 months at 15%?
Yeah, again, if I can go back through the, back in time through, I don't, I only have the July 26th board packet in front of me. The one before that, I think had the, all the way up to 2019, and we said that was a three-year.
No, the board packet before that, the motion that was made, and I made the motion to accept five, 5% one year, 5% second, and Betty Evans seconded the motion, and the roll call was taken was five-zero. That was the entire conversation. There was no five, five, and five anywhere. It's 5% one year, five, and then the next one we get shows five, five, and five. Something happened in between that we had no knowledge of, nor did we participate in, which meant that staff participated and had knowledge. That's just wrong, and then we were misdirected, in my opinion, that evening to concentrate on changes that other board members wanted to have to make it look better. But we never got to the crux, and it wasn't until a few days after I got that letter from that lady, and I went, 15, and I looked at it and I went, well, yeah, it is 15. How did I miss that? I don't know, but I missed it, as well as I guess we all did. But where did it come, five, five, and five is the question. Wasn't it this dais?
I make a motion, we modify the letter for the splash, reducing it, and I don't, the first paragraph, we're going to add the 5% only, we're going to take care of the second, eliminate the third and the fourth. I would add the fifth and the sixth with President Sinaloa's modification of his statement for our review on the 27th.
Second half.
Oh, point of clarification, you didn't add in the clearly identifying that it was a split vote, three to two? Did you mention that?
Split, I didn't, split vote. Split vote, and item number one.
And can I add that we clearly identify that it was a 15% proposed rate?
No.
Proposed?
No. I don't want to add that to my motion. We had, that's already come and gone.
That's fine, that's fine.
This is where we ended up.
Well, regardless if we do it or not, if we don't do it, I think, I think the title's missed, is weird.
What, the top title?
Yeah, the top.
It says limiting, what, how do we do that?
It votes to limit water rates, that.
Yeah, we can, we'll cross out the limit and put three to, directors vote three to two, two.
That's probably the best.
Yeah, and just say what it was. You mentioned 5% is, is, can we actually say what it is?
Yes.
Yeah, we can. Keep that language same.
I think you explained the 5% pretty well in here.
Yeah, we just actually spelled out what it was instead of five.
It's 5% of the cost of water only.
Yeah, we just actually put the actual increase, 46 cents. Yeah, we just actually put the actual increase, 46 cents.
Can I call for the question?
Was there a second?
I seconded it.
Oh, okay.
So, did you accept all those?
Yes.
Did you accept, we put 15% and we only increased 5%?
No, I did not. I only wanted that one piece. Call for the question.
Don't say call for the question. It's a whole different way of running things.
But in order to do it correctly, I have to make a motion to call for the question.
We have a motion.
You have a motion, you have a second. And we got it clarified. The 15% is not in there, right?
But we want to make the vote, so how do you do that correctly?
We could do a roll call. Yeah, just do a roll call.
Well, you know.
That's what you're asking for, right, Jim? You're asking this.
But I, I thought in Robert's Rules of Order, in order to eliminate, to end the discussion, you can-
Call for the question.
Call, but don't you have to ask for a motion to call the question? Do you just call for the question?
Yes, sir.
Where's Betty Ferguson? She always been apologizing.
We've asked for it twice now. We should call for the question.
And you've been given it. I'm just waiting for the roll call.
Point of order, point of order.
There you go.
Point of order, perfect.
Point of order. And we want to get into it, we'll play that game with whoever wants to play it.
Right.
Point of order. This board has never been known for trying to shut up other board members. And when you ask for call for the question, you're trying to shut up other board members that might have something important to say. Now, if that's the way this board wants to run itself in the future, that's fine. That's equal play on all sides.
Calling for the question.
Someone wants to talk and you go, "I call for the question, motion." I mean, that's just wrong. I think we've always listened to whatever anybody had to say on this dais. And I think that's the way the public expects us to be, but certainly the courtesy that I would give to anyone on this dais at any time. So, when you call for the question, it's meant to shut up the conversation because you had your say and we don't want anybody else to have their say. So, he was about to call for, I mean, he said call for the question, but to shut people up. It's just wrong.
So, do we need a roll call, please?
Could we clarify that?
I wanted to make sure. I thought I heard we did want paragraph five in there. Is that correct?
No, one, two, five, and six.
Correct. That's what I, that's what I've gotten.
With the changes to six, then President?
Yeah, pending, pending a quote.
Pending a quote for me, I have six. And if I heard correctly, you're going to change the title that says board directors voted three to two to increase water rates or whatever, however you want to put it. And then we're not going to the 15%. We're not going to reference that. You want to reference the initial 8.1?
No.
Okay. Is that, everybody good? Are you good with that in the second?
Yes, yes, I am.
Want to give everybody a tenth of a second?
Can I talk back?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thanks, Chris.
And we're going to review this on the 27th?
Or before the 20, sometime before, right?
Oh, we're going to get it.
We'll email it to you as soon as we have it and then you'll approve it on the 27th.
And the only thing I would say too, not, then, I don't think that's too far the motion, but just kind of more board direction is, whatever we come up with for this, then any of the other communication around this topic should be very consistent to it too.
Yes, yes.
Be it press releases, Facebook, whatever.
Exactly. One of the reasons why I want to get it done is for those other purposes as well.
And I really, because we did the Facebook posting about the hearing, which is great. No problem with that. But now that we have, now that there's been an outcome from that, we should, we should follow up because there was some correspondence between customers on Facebook and social media that we should let them know what the results were if they didn't come here, so. Great, thanks, Chris. Anything else while we're live?
Nope.
Okay. Any more to move on to close session?
So, session.
Okay, so I?
Thank you.